This Wild City Council meeting for November 28th. Tonight, we'll go ahead and start off our usual way with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Council Brooks tonight.
Look, you guys all know what to do. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That brings us to announcements, and we have a proclamation declaring November as Native American Heritage Month, led by Council Hillier.
Thank you, Mayor. Proclamation, recognizing Native American Heritage Month. Whereas, the history and culture of our nation has been significantly influenced by Native Americans and indigenous peoples. And whereas, the city of Tuolaton recognizes the unique and enduring relationship that exists between indigenous peoples and their traditional territories. And the area currently known as Washington County, Oregon, rests on land that was first inhabited by the Atvali Talapuas, also called the Tuolaton people, who flourished here for thousands of years. And whereas, Oregon is home to nine federally recognized tribal nations, including the Burns Paiute, the Confederate Tribes of Kooz, Lower Umquah, and Sisula Indians. Confederate Tribes of Grand Ron, excuse me, Confederate Tribes of Salets. Confederated Tribes of Umatilla Reservation. Confederated Tribes of Warm Springs. Cow Creek Band of Umquah Indians. Coquill Indian Tribe. And the Kalamit Tribes. And whereas, equity is a priority for the city of Tuolaton in ensuring that Native Americans are front and center in our efforts to improve opportunities and outcomes for Native American families, communities, and businesses. And whereas, meaningful engagement centers the lived experience of Native Americans in Oregon, so as to provide equitable access to the city's services and development, infrastructure, and program investments. And whereas, the city of Tuolaton is committed to engaging with tribal nations and tribal communities to build relationships and address issues affecting their well-being. And whereas, during the month of November, we honor the native peoples in this, their ancestral homes, and recognize their continued contribution to all areas of community and family life, arts, and culture. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the City Council of the city of Tuolaton, Oregon, that November 2022 is Native American Heritage Month. Introduced and adopted this 28th day of November 2022.
For folks who want to learn a little bit more about the native peoples who sell this land or in the region, the library has a display right now of books and movies. So if you pop by the library, you can learn a little bit more about the folks who were here way before we were and help settle this area. That brings us on to public comment. Public comment is asking for anyone to address the council tonight regarding items not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone here in the meeting or in Zoom who would like to address the council, this will be the appropriate time. I have a handful of signups. You don't have to be signed up to address council tonight, but I will do the signups first. And then if you want to raise your hand or raise your hand on the Zoom meeting, address the council, you're more than welcome. So first off, I have the Norwood says no. Welcome.
So my name is Dr. Tim Neary. I'm a Normwood Heights resident and interim president of newly, as of this morning, the interim president of the Firearm CIO. I'm against the proposed text amendment to allow the property on South Norwood to be rezoned from institutional to high-density residential. I know the application hasn't come in yet, but if it comes through, it's going to cause a lot of problems, a lot of traffic, without any real solutions for our area. We all want Tuolaton to be a great place to live, but this and the current Basalt Creek plan seem to work toward the opposite. City planners don't seem to care about livability for new or current residents as no comprehensive traffic, environmental, or stormwater management study has been done that inclusively evaluates all of the proposed and approved residential and commercial developments. Overall plan for Basalt Creek has drastically been worse than the initial plan and is not beneficial to Tuolaton in its current form. Our request, the City Council, to not approve any proposed text amendments for land use or any further development of Basalt Creek until comprehensive studies are completed and an updated, clear, and unified plan for Basalt Creek can be presented to residents. The plan should increase lockability, decrease car dependence, and include plans for park, restaurant, and grocery space. Wish I could use the rest of my time to speak more on this, but a more pertinent issue has come up. A group against the new high-rise apartment on Norwood, just a grassroots effort, started on Facebook called Norwood Says No, received contact from the city ordinance compliance officer, Ken Froscher. He indicated he received a call about our signs appearing in town. Officer Froscher stated that he consulted with his sergeant, Brian Levine, and ordered the group that all signs and banners must be removed, including those on private property. The ordinance doesn't address signs or banners on private property that are meant to raise neighborhood awareness. Signs and banners posted are flags symbolic of the neighborhood group, which are specifically excluded from the city banner ordinance. Order to take down all signs is an inappropriate overreach of power and a violation of First Amendment rights. Guard signs on public and private property are all over town, have been for years without issue, and it causes one to wonder whose influence is being exerted to motivate the compliance officer to specifically target our group. The Supreme Court's already ruled in favor of residents' rights to put signs and banners on their own property in the Supreme Court decision of Reed versus the town of Gilbert and the Supreme Court and city of Ladoo versus Gilley. To my knowledge, the compliance officer has not begun forcibly removing signs or banners, but my neighbors and I will not tolerate a violation of our constitutional rights. I encourage the council to advise the compliance officer to cease the selective enforcement of the side banner ordinance on private property, or the council to revise and clarify sign ordinances with resident input to ensure residents' First Amendment rights are protected. Just for curiosity, this is the sign, which is not propane or offense.
Chief Pickering, you want to address that right now before anyone goes? About the sign?
The signs that are currently on private property will not be removed or enforced at this time, awaiting a legal review done by the attorney. At this time, there will be no enforcement of removal of the signs on private property.
Our next up, I have Julie Heronimus. Welcome.
Hi, thank you. Yes, my name is Julie Heronimus, and I live right off of Iowa Drive, just south of 12th and High School. I'm here tonight to share my concerns about the increasing traffic problems in Tuolaton. I've lived here for over 20 years, and I've just seen our traffic get worse and worse. We now have our own daily rush hour right here on Southwest Boons Ferry and also on 65th after 3:00 PM. Well, I'm thankful we finally have some pedestrian crossings that allow safe travel across Boons Ferry. You know, and especially to the high school and back, it's not enough. We can't stop what Wilsonville is doing with their growing community from using our roads, which they do every day because their exit is backed up. But we can certainly be proactive and consider what makes best sense for Tuolaton. Before we start approving any more new housing and changing zoning to high density in our area and the expanded Basalt Creek area, let's start with some updated traffic studies to demonstrate what our roads can handle now and in the future. Let's be proactive, Tuolaton, not reactive. Remember, the decisions that you make are today impact the livability of our great town. Thank you.
Tim, you already went, didn't you?
Yeah.
Anyone else want to speak? Amanda, you there? You've been two plus years of Zoom, we're stole.
I was just clapping.
Okay. All right. Anyone else in the room? Come on up, feel free.
My name is Jan Perry, and I live on Stono Drive, which is very close to autumn sunrise. We watched as all of the trees were taken down. Trees are really important for our environment, and I'm wondering about, I would just ask a rhetorical question, how you feel about our environment and our climate change and all of that? I would think that you all would have a concern about that. However, all of those trees went down, which absorb the gases and the pollution and all of that. They just store it inside. When you take it down, it releases. So all of that released, all of those years of absorbing what goes down I-5, which is where people are just sitting in traffic every afternoon and evening. So to avoid that, they go down Southwest Boons Ferry. So your decision, I'm guessing all of you, decided that it was a great idea to have higher density in there. So now we have thousands, hundreds of more cars that are going to be on those roads, backing everything up and putting more pollution into the air. But now you have a chance to make a better decision. With the high-rise, that's going to be even higher density. We're going to have even more cars coming out on Norwood Drive, which is going to cause another backup there as well as all the backup that's on Southwest Boons Ferry. So I would like to see all of you make a better decision this time. If you have seen what's happened with the trees, the buffer that we thought we were going to have, all coming down, 100% of it. Now, the only trees we have are those trees that are in that area where you want to put a high-rise. It's just going to be, it's just going to make everything worse, and it's going to impact the environment. And every single day, we make decisions about our environment. And I'd just like you to think about this as being one of those decisions that you make. Thank you.
Would like to speak. What up?
Please.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening.
My name's Chad Fribbly. I'm also a resident off of Stono Drive, largely here in support of the Norwood Says No initiative. My family, I originally moved here and grew up here since 1984. I've seen a lot of changes in this town and been in and out of the area, and now I've moved back here with my own family. It's been a great place to be and grow up, but there's been a lot of changes to this town over the many, many years that I've been here. Back in 1984, I can remember growing up here, Tuolaton was kind of like the end of the road. It was like, you know, it was the outskirts of Portland, and we are no longer that. I think that a lot of these developments and initiatives that were developed and looked at many years ago with Basalt Creek 15-plus years ago is an outdated plan. We are no longer the end of the road. We are a pass-through city for the city of Portland. Everybody is going to Wilsonville and can be and beyond. The traffic is horrendous, and the way the city is addressing this, and I've spoken to the city planners about this, the fact that they are going to wait for these developments to go in before doing traffic changes and studies is totally backwards. We already have an existing problem. We know how many homes are going in in autumn sunrise. We can project how many cars are going to be coming in when those developments, and then adding an additional high-rise complex with 300 more units, plus the upcoming tolling of I-5. These people are trying to pass through our town, not live in our town. We need to address this. We need to do something serious about this. I'm one of those people, too, that I have never been involved in politics. I don't have a lot of faith in it, but I am here tonight trying to get involved in my community and put faith in all of you, that you will listen to the voices of the community and our needs and vote this down when the proposal does come in, because we need to change our thinking and get in front of this traffic situation. And otherwise, our resources are going to be stressed, and we're just not, we're just not going down the right path. So again, I hope that this is something that will be taken seriously. Listen to the voices of those of us living immediately by it, but also the needs and the future of this town, because it has changed. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? As you mentioned, as you stated, the application has been submitted yet, so there's nothing we can do yet, but we all wait to see what is going to happen, and we always keep the best interest in the community in our minds, and we'll see what happens. But as of right now, I got personally say I'm very sad to see all those trees go. It's not what was supposed to happen. There was a mistake made by the company who was developing, and now we lose the trees. But the city has come back, forced them to do a different landscaping plan. Doesn't replace those big trees that were there, but it'll be a start to get trees back where, you know, the big ones used to be. But I know it's not a perfect replacement, it's not the perfect answer, but the plan wasn't fully executed well. And we couldn't have more trees go down on the power lines, because I was getting lots of emails about that, too, about, you know, your guys losing power two, three times in a day. We can't have that either, so very sad. I know Council Brooks is very much involved with the climate action, and we're all discussing the loss of the trees. And it wasn't our vision, we tried to save as many trees as we could. All right? Anyone else? All right, with that, we'll move on to the next section. Thanks for coming tonight.
Yeah, thank you guys very much for coming.
Biggest thing you can do is stay involved.
Yes.
Don't be shy. You want to hear? All right.
Yes, please do. Please do.
All right, that brings us to consent. Consent agenda, those items considered routine, and will be adopted by one motion, unless someone in the council would like one of them removed and heard separately later tonight. Consent agenda consists of six items. Item number one, consideration of approval of the work session in regular meeting minutes of November 14th, 2022. Item number two, authorize the city manager to execute an amendment to extend the broadband users group, BUG, intergovernmental agreement to January 1st, 2026. Item number three, consideration of resolution number 5655-22, authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to an intergovernmental agreement with Clean Water Services for the 65th slash Nyberg Sanitary Sewer Rehab Project. Item number four, consideration of resolution number 5658-22, awarding a contract for veterans' plaza construction documents and professional services to Shapiro Didway LLC. Item number five, consideration of resolution number 5659-22, authorizing the purchase and installation of, purchase and installation of park barbecue equipment, shelter, and surface through a cooperative procurement program. And finally, item number six, consideration of resolution number 5660-22, awarding the contract for construction of the Tuolaton Road to Hisbrook area improvement, part of the Tuolaton Mover Forward Program. For any councilor like any of these, one or more of these items, remove the consent tonight.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agendas read. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as read. Any discussion on those motions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous? That brings us to special reports. The annual report of the Juanita Poll Center Advisory Committee. Sarah and Susan, another regular. I think third, your second one's this chamber.
I'll see my own home very often.
Welcome.
Okay. Thank you for having us.
Good evening, Mayor Duvnick and members of council. My name is Sarah Shepherd. I'm the center supervisor at the Juanita Poll Center. We are here tonight to present the annual report for the Juanita Poll Center, and Susan Noack will present. She is our advisory committee chair.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you for having us. I'm excited to report tonight because we're open, and we have been open, but the last time we were here, we weren't open. So this is exciting to tell you what's going on now. Our first slide shows you our committee. We're a little smaller now. We were very small during the pandemic. We only had four, and we're growing again, but we're a very strong committee and committed to making sure the Juanita Poll Center thrives, which it is doing. So we're playing our part. Next slide. The committee role, we meet every other month on a Wednesday morning. You're welcome to come and join us, 10 o'clock. And we hear updates from Sarah and Marilyn, year-to-date figures for participation in all the programs offered at the center, and there are still some online, but most of them are in the center now and in person. We review the committee and the center goals and our marketing plan, and we share ideas for future programming. We have a voice as a committee and as representing our seniors, so it's important. Next slide, please. As you know, we went virtual in March 2020 and opened our doors again for in-person in January 2022. It took a while to get people back in the building and get our programs up and running. But Marilyn and Sarah did a fabulous job of bringing things back in person and adding to it. It was quite interesting to see how well they did. And the last winter, it was small participation, but it's growing. Meals on Wheels is back open again and running, even though it's two days a week, they're getting participation. So there are people back in the center and using all the things that Sarah and Marilyn are providing for the seniors. The programming that we have at the center, as you can see from the list on the slide, it's a large variety of trying to fit the needs and wants of our older population and to be sensitive to the diversity in our community. And we have a Spanish-speaking Makrame class, and you'll see a slide later on of a guitar class that is taken in Spanish. And under environmental, our Earthwise Crew, which is new this year, promoting environmental wellness for older adults and getting good participation. We have a variety of fitness classes from Silver Sneakers to Tai Chi and yoga, and I'm sure there are more, but I don't know. So, and they're filling up, which they weren't at the first of the year, so that's good. Our seniors are getting out again. We have, our programs are evidence-based, supported by data, and repeatedly tested and shown to make a positive, significant difference in participant outcomes, which is what Sarah and Marilyn are really good at, finding those kinds of programs that are viable and important for seniors. And our next one. This is one I, this near and dear to my heart, because I'm an event planner and sponsorships have been the lifeblood of any nonprofit and any organization like the Juanita Poll Center. These partnerships are vital to the success of this program. And as you can see from the list on the slide, JPC does really well with their partnerships. And again, that's thanks to Sarah and Marilyn and the city for nurturing these sponsorships. They're important, and they're to be well taken care of. Meals on Wheels has been a partner with the Juanita Poll Center for over 40 years. It's a long time, even though they're only two days a week, they're still there and supportive. Others have been, some have been over six years, almost 10, and we have new ones this year, which is exciting. Northwest Medicare Advisors are lunch and learn sponsors, which are very well attended. Oasis Senior Advisors are a book club sponsor, and Tuolaton Sustainability Network, an Earthwise Crew partner, they're all new this year, and we're excited to have them and appreciate the support. Washington County Aging and Disability has become a huge partner, again, collaborating with JPC to bring awareness, education, and support to Tuolaton. They sponsor a variety of programs and classes and have added our Saturday Yoga for Veterans class to their sponsorship and support. And I'd like to get, I'm going to read a quote from one of their older adult specialists at Washington County. "The Juanita Poll Center has demonstrated strategic leadership and passionate support for the older adults they serve. We are grateful for our unique partnership with JPC, as it would be a challenge to provide support to local seniors without this trusted connection to the community." Speaks a lot for what our senior center does. Sarah, and Sarah has also built over the several, last several years, a really strong partnership with National Recreation and Recreation and has received nationwide press and videos and grants. And we've been nationwide, can you imagine that? And selected a lot of times as the senior center to be, to be, what's the word I'm looking for? Showcaseed.
That's fabulous.
Yeah, that's exciting. Now, benefits. As you can see from the list, as outlined on the slide, the benefits are the keys to combat social isolation and poor health, both major conditions, sometimes life-threatening, found with older adults and not always recognized as important, and they are. The outreach and focus that JP does, and I'm not being dramatic here, but can not only enhance lives but save lives. That's what they do, is it's a huge health crisis in seniors. And what JPC offers is extremely helpful for the health and well-being. Next slide. The photos on the flip sides just represent a few of our extra programs offered at JPC. The Mental Wellness and Stress Management Fair was very successful and well-received by the participants. The Pili Guitar Group is another of our Spanish-speaking classes offered on your arts and culture. And what's going on right now, the Letters from Wintertime Characters is a big volunteer program. We have over 50 seniors who volunteer personally to write over 200 letters for young participants of the program. I understand it might get up to 250 letters this year. 380? Oh gee. That's since last week.
It was a huge jump this year.
They're busy. And then, the next one. That's just a good cross-section of our active seniors at our center. They're busy. So, and then rentals. Well, the building opened again in January 2022. Rentals didn't start until April, and they were slow to come back, but they have come back strong now. And the building is rented out on Saturday and Sunday now every month, as well as select evenings during the week. So that's exciting, too, that we're getting a little cross-section of the community that comes into the building. They might not come otherwise, and they know we're there. Parents. And several years ago, you might remember, pre-COVID, the center got all-new furniture and a new, fresh look, and we were updated and upgraded, and it continues. We had got a new roof last year, which is important for the wealth, the health of our building, like that's who's inside. And then, if you know the center, we had folding doors in the dining room area, which were battered and bruised and falling apart, and we now have new folding doors as of last June. And 80 of our 160 dining room chairs have been reupholstered, and hopefully the rest will be done in 2023. Some needed repairs refreshing for the building. And then our action plan for 2023. I can't say this enough, under the management and leadership of Sarah and Marilyn, JPC continues to keep current with all the changes post-COVID, and we're still going through changes in our lifestyles and bringing vital programming to our seniors, or actually, we like to be called active older adults. So the partnerships that have been developed by this management team are outstanding and build awareness of JPC throughout the community, besides giving support when applying for grants and sponsorships. And I can't say enough about the leadership in the building and the support from the whole Parks and Rec team with Julie and Ross and Rich and Olive and Heidi. They take good care of our center. It's an important piece in our community. And my final remarks, which are mine, I want to thank you, Frank. While the city of Tuolaton offers a variety of resources for our community, such as our wonderful library, our fabulous parks, supporting our businesses and our schools, school communities, and wonderful events for our community of summer and winter, the Juanita Poll Center is a very important part of community living, offering a special place to be for our seniors, who are oftentimes overlooked, but they're not overlooked in Tuolaton, and we thank you.
Thank you.
Questions for Susan or Sarah? Council Pratt and Council Hillier.
You guys do a great job there, and I do hope the rest of those chairs get re-
And I do hope the rest of those chairs get repolstered this year. Here, um, my question is, you have, I got to go on, um, one or two of your excursions this. I don't know if that's what you call them, the adventures?
Day trips.
Yeah, the day trips. And, uh, my question is, if a person can't afford the cost, um, do you have ways for them to cover that cost? And what would a person do to, um, find out about that?
Sure. So we are, actually, as we speak, working on a scholarship policy, scholarship program for our older adults who might not have the means to afford a lot of the stuff that we do. Obviously, we try to keep things either as low cost as possible or even no cost, to try to get as many folks in the door and participating. Uh, but there has been a select few folks who have needed help in the past. Uh, no real policy or program has been set in place, but it's in the works right now. As you probably know, Tigered Senior Center is not open right now, so we're seeing a lot of Tigered participants coming into our center. So, you know, obviously, we want to help the Twolton residents as well. So if anybody has any questions or concerns, I would ask them to just talk directly to Marilyn or myself, and we can help them out. Figure something out. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the great report. And I would love for you to just share for people, um, who are listening or, or maybe here that haven't been in the Poll Center, just different times of the day, about the billiards tables. And I see people in, you know, sewing and doing different things. I think there are, other than the regular programming that you have, there's just a whole lot more community that happens there. And I would love for you to get to speak to that.
Sure. Yeah, we have a, well, coming back from COVID, it's not as robust as I, as it has been pre-COVID with our drop-in activities. Like you said, we have pool tables that are open when the buildings open, free of charge. Anybody can come in and play. We have card players, we have mahjong players, we have bridge players. We have puzzles, we have a public computer if folks want to come in and, you know, go on the internet, do some work. We had a quilting group for the longest time. Unfortunately, you know, they haven't returned. Um, I think a lot of people have moved further away and just can't get to the center as easily as they have in the past. But it's slow to come back with the drop-in program. But there are still set times of the day that we have certain activities for drop-in. And anytime that people want to come in and use the center to socialize, I mean, they're here for lunch Tuesdays and Thursdays. A lot of people play after and play cards or dominoes or whatever they want to play. So, yeah, any, it doesn't necessarily have to be an activity, but, um, that's kind of when we know people are going to show up. So that's what we tell them and give them our daily calendar. So. Lots of other stuff besides programs and trips and a lot of social activities.
Other questions? Susan Grant.
Thanks. In my family, we use the center a lot and we love it. And my, um, mom moved here when she was already eighty-five. And she's made so many wonderful friends through the center. It's been great. Pre-COVID, I think one of the really popular, um, sort of educational programs you guys had was, um, help for seniors with tax preparation. Is it possible that we might get back to that for this coming tax year?
Yeah, we actually were, we had the service during COVID as well. It was a lot different because we weren't in the center. I think they had a drop-off location, um, where they could drop off, and then it was all mail back. But they, the service was still run through AARP. Um, and yeah, they were here last year, they were in the building.
Oh, okay, good.
People can start signing up for, um, appointments in January, or whenever I get the schedule. Uh, but usually sometime between, uh, early Jan- early to mid-January. Um, and that would be February through the mid, mid-April timeframe. Yeah, perfectly. Doing that again, obviously, I, I usually reach out to AARP just to confirm. Uh, but they've got some very committed volunteers, and we usually get the same folks that come to the center and help out every year.
I've actually, I've had quite a few people ask me about that, so I'm glad to know that we're up and ready and start looking online in January.
Yep.
Perfect. Thank you.
Great.
Um, today we had a, a presentation from the Equity Recommendation Committee, and they had a few ideas on how to market their, how to market, uh, specific programs for people with different, uh, from different, with different abilities and different backgrounds. And one of the things that they thought of, like, um, doing like video announcements or something like that. Like, we can re- repost, like, for instance, if I follow you on Facebook, if you do a video announcement, what's new, what's coming up, um, like, including the preparations of taxes and all that. I can repost it on my Facebook or Twolatino's or any other places. I thought that was, that kind of like, was a great idea that I'm going to start kind of doing. So I thought that would be, I don't know if you have a Facebook, that people can re, you know, follow or things like that. But that would be a nice way of spreading the word as, when you got a poll begins, well, opens more and brings in more programs. Because I had no idea. I knew it was open, but not like the way it is that I'm hearing now. So, yeah, I thought it was still kind of like, very, very, uh, limited. It looks like you're fully openly.
Back open, yeah. And I think that's a great idea. I, we're always looking for new and better ways to get the word out of who we are back there, you know?
Right. Yeah, I met a, thank you. Yeah, I met a few, uh, when COVID was kind of like, we're in the middle of it, uh, someone who, a neighbor of mine who was, uh, an, uh, big attended, a attendee to the Wantita Poll was very sad to see all these programs go. She's eighty-nine or something like that, couldn't not get into a computer and all that. But she's feeling a li- little bit better that things are opening. But I didn't know, like, all the programs that were happening, so I'm, like, impressed. So, thank you. Yeah.
Um, I just want to thank you both for your, um, your service and your work. I've really come this last, after getting, um, becoming Free Range Bridget, uh, after COVID, have been over at the Wantita Poll Center quite a bit. And, um, one of the things that I think is just so important, well, there's two things that come to mind. And I, I'd like, I'd love for you to speak to it. I feel like I ask this one every time. But are there age requirements for activities?
Not necessarily. I mean, a lot of our, a lot of our trips are eighteen and older.
Yeah.
Um, I would say a lot of our activities are eighteen and older. But if, let's say, we're talking about a fitness class, it might cater, the, the instructor might cater it more toward the fifty-five-plus age group. We do and are trying to offer some more programming for the thirty-two, fifty-year age group. You know, might be a little bit, might look a little bit more different than, you know, what we would offer to sixty and above. So our instructors are very good at, um, catering to whatever age group is there, whether it be a fitness class or an environmental education class. But I wouldn't say we have age restrictions for anything.
And I just like that idea, just reminding people that it's a, a senior center in a way, but it's also a community center and widening the possibilities around that. Because the, the trips, the activities and the classes, and honestly, for me, I like a senior class. They're much more forgiving and soothing in a certain kind of way. And, um, I've really enjoyed the Tai Chi that was added this year and the yoga instructor's amazing. And there's just so much that's going on over there. It's the tip of the iceberg, the book study. The other thing I wanted to say is, acknowledge is, um, the leadership there, you and Marilyn. I think there's a thing about, um, especially working as a social worker, there can be differentials between staff and community a lot of times. But the way that the volunteers are integrated into service and, um, the way that the staff relates with community is so, it's community building in itself. There's not that sort of stiffness or whatever. And, um, I think it's just so healthy for people that are coming in. Um, it breaks down that isolation and feels warm and welcoming right away. So I just want to acknowledge that with all the volunteers, the way that you train and manage volunteers, it's amazing. And then just how you guys are. And then finally, I just wanted to do, I know we talked about it already, but another shout-out because I thought the Veterans Breakfast, after being on hiatus for so long, was such a big event and went off so beautifully. So I just, and I just want to also, uh, acknowledge that this is part of our parks. And, um, sometimes we think of parks, we always think of green fields and different things like that and pickleball. But it's also, um, going and touring the transfer station and learning about bees and, um, going, you know, and doing exercise and learning new things and the emotional wellness pieces. I mean, there's just so much going on there. So thanks for such a, um, robust amount of choices that you can do. It is fantastic.
Just an anecdote, you mentioned Tigered, that several months ago, I called Susan from the American Legion in Tigered. I dropped in to have lunch, and I had several of their members ask about the Poll Center and mentioned that the Tiger facility was closed. And, uh, they were asking about Meals on Wheels, so I knew who to call, called Susan. Was able to tell, you know, quite a few veterans at the American Legion that, you know, the Meals on Wheels was being, you know, the lunches were there again. And they all knew the Poll Center was open, and a lot of them were already using it. Uh, because again, Tiger doesn't have one, so they're coming to our facility, which I think is terrific. But, um, and they're eager for theirs to open again, but I guess it's going to be quite a while with all the construction. So I'm glad that we were able to help out residents in Tigered, too.
Well, I just want to say, I have to say, even when they're open, I hear from Tigered residents that, like, I want to eat a Poll Center better. So I just, I just, I've heard that from real people.
So thank you, Sarah, for all you do, and Marilyn and Susan at the center.
And you, if you remember from last year, when we were shut down during COVID, I went on all the different center sites and Twolton JPC was the only one offering online programming. All the other centers shut down and, um, uh, we shined.
Yes.
We really did. Thanks to Marilyn and Sarah. I mean, it's a lot of hard work to do what they do and, and to make sure that the programs are right for our senior community.
Coming tonight.
Excellent.
All right. All right. At this point, I'm going to go off-script. I already prepared Julie to have Julie come up and talk about a fun event this weekend, because I wanted it to slip by without people knowing. Even though it was like three separate articles in Twolton Life about it. Julie, what's happening this weekend?
Very fortunate for me to be here tonight. Next year, we'll put it on the agenda. But if any of you have not heard, the Holiday Lights Parades are returning this weekend. So Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, December second, third, and fourth. Um, Holiday Lights Parade started in twenty twenty as a response to, um, us not really being able to gather, um, in person. And so we really wanted to do something to bring our community together while keeping everyone safe. And thus, the Bring the Parades to You concept was born. And after the response that we got from our community, we realized we can't ever stop. They're coming back, and we invite the community to participate, either by going onto our website. You can sign up to be in the parade and feel like the biggest celebrity that you will ever imagine, um, to be in the parade. Or you can, of course, just watch, um, from your garage or window, or your neighbor's garage or window. The routes are all available on the city's website, as well as the link to sign-ups at twoltonorgan.gov. And hope to see some of you out there. And we'll honk and weep. Yes.
I did get a question this weekend, um, from resident one, do you envision the celebration of the comments ever coming back?
We've been, yeah, we've been hearing a lot of requests, um, from the community for the Star Knights and Holiday Lights, the tree lighting. Of course, the lights are, are up to go on.
Yeah.
Um, they'll be turned on this weekend, actually. I, I believe, I know they've been doing, all the volunteers have been out working on that, as far as, and also our park staff. Um, but we know that there is a desire from the community to bring back the, the choirs and Santa and everything else. And so we're working on how to manage doing all of those things. We want to, we want to be able to deliver everything we possibly can.
I pretty much appreciate you and Heidi, all the effort you put into this every year. And it's been a lot of fun to do.
Thank you. Yeah. And we'll see, uh, Mayor, you've been in a car and lots of other great ones, so.
Thanks for coming up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, back to our regular, uh, programming here. That brings us to general business, consideration of ordinance number, uh, one four seven one dash twenty-two. Making certain determinations and findings relating to and approving the Core Opportunity and Reinvestment Area, also known as CORA, Plan and Directing Notice of Approval to be published. That's a mouthful.
Where is it?
Welcome, Jonathan.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. This is our fifth time back with this proposed plan. However, this is the last time, I think, hopefully, with the added changes that we've made over the last three months. So briefly, for those that are watching and those that are in attendance, we'll go over this really quick. So tonight is before use fourteen seventy-one dash twenty-two, an ordinance establishing the core area or CORA Plan. We know the boundary, but for those still watching, it goes from Grand Century Hotel down to Lower Boones Ferry Road, over to Legacy Meridian, all the way over to Kaiser. So real quick, we've been at this since two thousand and eighteen, and tonight we are proposing the adoption of ordinance fourteen seventy-one. A brief recap, we started in January with the boundary determination. From January to July, we led, um, staff proposal projects and bucket list concerns. Council went through it, along with our working group, modified the plan document, both the boundary, maximum indebtedness, and planned projects. This was submitted by the Twolton Development Commission on nine twelve. The public hearing was held last time on November fourteenth. And then if the adoption happens tonight on November twenty-eighth, it will be in effect December twenty twenty-two, which is next month. But the first collection will not begin until twenty twenty-four due to the delayed property tax accrual. There is a provision in ORS four five seven that does allow for a ninety-day challenge based on Luba. So it's, that's a standard thing for any development. And, but we are confident it would uphold. Real quick, this document is going to be a, our community's sustainable effort to strengthen the social, cultural, environmental, and economic vitality of Central Twolton by funding projects that improve property values, eliminating existing and future blight, and creating an active civic core. Here is the final proposed boundary with the modifications that we were talking about last time in your agenda packet. You'll actually see the most updated legal description of the planned area boundary. We had to wait for a little bit. We didn't have it last time, because in the area right here, we had to work with our GIS and also AKS Engineering to make sure that we have the right easements identified. The total maximum indebtedness is a hundred and thirty-nine million in today's term dollars, that's eighty-one million. And there are four major projects, the Main Street Corridor, the Catalyst Project, the River Plaza, and Trail Development. A brief list, as you can see, it's broken down into the key buckets that you identified in March, eighty-one million dollars. And then the next steps, just so you'll be aware, uh, next year, we'll probably start year one through five planning, just kind of identifying, working with you and with, uh, city management to figure out when we do get that proposed money, what is the best method with everything else that's going on to the city and seeing where that fits. As I said earlier, in twenty twenty-four, the first increment collections are slated to begin. And in your report accompanying the plan document and the financial analysis, first major projects won't begin until twenty twenty-nine, twenty thirty. And so I just want to make sure that everyone knows that while we've done amazing work, this is a long process. Uh, and so unfortunately, we won't have ten million dollars next year. We'll have about, um, up ten million by twenty thirty, and then that'll be up to city, the city finance to determine how to mess, move forward with projects. And that is it.
Questions, drop?
I want, can you go back to the map?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just going to throw a little holiday humor. I think it's interesting that, that looks kind of like a reindeer looking backwards. It kept with the animal thing, but.
I'm sorry, I see it.
It's like this, it had, and it's got a tail and it's running forward.
It's like this ahead, and it's got a tail, and it's running forward. Never mind. Maybe you planned it that way. Maybe, never mind. Thank you. It's not so much a question, it's just more, just wanted to share my happiness that we are able to take this on and to get this going. Because for years, that's always been something that I've wanted us to be able to do, is kind of grapple the downtown area especially, and sort of reimagine it and revision it as a big, you know, our community's living room, and how we can take the success that is around the lake, the Commons, and sort of, you know, move that westward and, you know, continue to bring residents downtown and make it vital and interesting and inclusive. And um you know, I was in West Lynn on the, the older part on the Willamette Drive Friday, and they did a small tree lighting, but the way that they've got, you know, the wide avenues and the outside seating, I mean, the whole community was there. It was like, if you didn't see both your neighbors there, it was an anomaly. I mean, it's like, you know, everybody was there, and that sense of warmth and community and touching base and special events and incorporating everybody, I just keep thinking, you know, those are my highest hopes for this project. So I'm just, I'm so thrilled and I'm so proud of the work that you've done. And the working group that worked on the Erd, which is kind of a funny name, I know Kristen's not here, but she was on there and the mayor, and I'm just thrilled, you know, to watch the next few years, especially twenty-twenty-nine, to see what that brings. So great work, long time coming, and I'm thrilled for the community. I think this is going to bring great things.
I just have a wonky question.
Okay.
So when we start talking the five-year plan, is that as city council or as Twolton Development?
It'll be the Twolton Development.
Okay.
But it will be this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because we're going to be doing a lot of changing the hats.
Yeah. Yeah. And we'll probably um with Sherilyn's direction, just kind of have like a one-page rebrief of the things that the T D C can do, maybe not necessarily next year, because there's really no big decisions to be made, but just kind of priority planning, dear, and your council working vision. Whoever you want to lead it. How about that?
Any other questions for?
I do. I just, I just want to say thank you, too. I mean, we've been going through this in a very um thoughtful and methodical way, and um it's, it's big decisions, and you know, um even just hearing community feedback tonight, there's things that can just go way wrong when things are not um mindful, and this process, to me, is um you've taken a lot of care with it, and um and it's been a, a joy working with council, too, together on this, to bring a more connected community together and to fruition, and I think it's something that we're all really invested in. And it's going to dovetail so nicely now that we can say that the Parks Bond has passed. Those two things working together is going to be um I hope a really something that people can feel that's really special for our city. So I appreciate your leadership in this. Thank you.
Can I do it?
You can do it.
I'd like to motion that we have a first reading by title only of ordinance number fourteen-seventy-one-dash-twenty-two. I'm practicing, because you're not going to be.
I have a motion. I have a motion of second for reading by title only, first reading by title only of ordinance number one-four-seven-one-dash-twenty-two. Any discussions on the motion? Right? Yeah, which way I want to start? Council Brooks.
Aye.
Council Hillier.
Aye.
Council Pratt.
Aye.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
President Grimes.
Aye.
I vote aye also.
Thank you. Consideration of ordinance one-four-seven-one-dash-two-two of the Twalton City Council making certain determinations and findings related to and approving the core opportunity and reinvestment area plan and directing that notice of approval be published.
I'd like to motion for a second reading by title only of ordinance number fourteen-seventy-one-dash-twenty-two.
I have the motion and a second for second reading by title only of ordinance number one-four-seven-one-dash-twenty-two. Any discussions on those motions? Council Hillier this time. Council Pratt.
Aye.
Council Reyes. Council Brooks.
Aye.
Council President Grimes.
Aye.
I vote aye also.
Thank you. Consideration of ordinance one-four-seven-one-dash-two-two of the Twalton City Council making certain determinations and findings related to and approving the core opportunity and reinvestment area plan and directing that notice of approval be published.
I'd like to motion that we adopt ordinance number fourteen-seventy-one-dash-twenty-two.
I have a motion of second to adopt ordinance number one-four-seven-one-dash-twenty-two. Any discussions on those motions? Council Brooks.
Aye.
Council Hillier.
Aye.
Council Pratt.
Aye.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
President Grimes.
Emphatic aye.
I vote aye also. It's unanimous.
Woo.
Woo.
Congratulations, Jonathan.
You had a woo-hoo from the mayor.
All right. Uh we had no items removed from consent. That brings us to Council Communications. Any communications this evening? Council Brooks.
I just want to thank everyone. I was out of town, but the, I know Rotary joined together along with Volunteer Services from Parks and the Twolton Sustainability Network to do litter blitz last week, not last weekend, the weekend before last. And um there was a small report that I got, but things like two mattresses were pulled, shopping carts, all kinds of things. So there was a really concerted effort by so many people to keep our community beautiful and um safe, and there was a lot of garbage picked up. So I wanted to say thank you to that, and I'm not sure if I announced this or not, but we also did um our first planting, and we'll be doing our second planting of native um community gardens, and the first one was over at the Heritage Center, so there's new pathways there and new natives. They're little now, and they're going to really come into bloom next spring, but if you have the opportunity, take a look. It was a kind of a garden box situation that was in disuse because they weren't using it the same way anymore, so they were able to take out those old rotting garden boxes and put in um a, a native kind of woodland's walk through there, and the next one will be at Jergens Park, and it'll be coming up shortly. Thank you.
Do I have a vote?
No, I just want to announce the Posada. Um just, if you're out there, uh and you're interested in coming to the, I believe it's our third time to do the uh Posada at Twalatinos in um at the library, December seventh, six P M. And just, everyone's welcome. So if you want to know what a Posada is, it's a festivity that is celebrated by many Latin American cultures. And um we're just come together, have food and activities, so um um just, you're all invited and welcome, December seventh at six P M at the library.
Children welcome.
Oh, yeah, children, yes. It's a very, children, family, we don't do anything with our families, with children and seniors, so everyone, everyone's welcome. Yeah.
Holiday lights parade, yay.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All the favors, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for attending tonight. Have a good evening.